This is what we have.
Yeah, five thirty guys, let's see if the flight orders have.
Jenny David.
Here.
Roger Mahew.
Yes.
Carol Wiltsey.
Here.
Brenda Simmons.
Sir Craig Scott.
Approved the agenda, commissioners, any additions or corrections?
Yes, I have an addition. Uh, hold on just, I have it. It has to do with. Oh, here it is, add to the general. I want the, on the budget, I don't, it says something about budget on there, but I'd like to discuss what services are at risk. If, uh, if millages don't pass, we need to discuss that, right, in generalities, but it needs to be discussed so the people understand we are working on this.
Do you want to add that under, because of the military plus, that's kind of in the discussion, but we can, we can add that on.
You can add it anywhere you want to, as long as we have it.
So we'll put F services.
Yeah.
Any other additions or corrections?
No, I'll make a motion.
We don't need a motion.
Oh.
Item three, public comment, any public comment on the room, on agenda items only? Item four, appointments, four A, Mike Bowers, emergency management coordinator related to the cert conference funding. Good evening, Mr. Mars.
Good evening, how's everybody doing evening?
Good, how are you?
Good, doing very well. So, um, I sent a, a short letter to all of you, so our cert volunteer team, throughout the region, is having a conference in, uh, late April, and it's going to actually be at the, the forwards, uh, quality in.
Could you speak just a little bit?
Oh, yes, I can, sorry.
I made a mistake and I don't have.
Look her way.
They want in.
You'll hear.
Yeah, no worries, so, uh, I have no problem speaking up.
Thank you.
So, um, so we're doing a volunteer, uh, conference, it's a one day conference, it's going to be at the quality in, up at forwards, up on the hill. It's a hundred percent reimbursed through Homeland Security, uh, the Michigan State Police Emergency Management, Homeland Security is going to be the keynote speaker, uh, and then we're going to follow up with the big safety, safety presentation from Consumers Energy, and then we're going to go into some of the skills and practice and teach skills that these, uh, cert members would be using, uh, in the area. Um, part of the reason we, uh, uh, were, were able to get the bid up here in West Branch, it's never been here in West Branch before, was because collectively, we have the largest cert team in, in, on the east side of the state, so, um, uh, you know, um, and it's a hundred percent reimbursed, uh, we're looking to spend no more than forty-five hundred dollars right now, uh, the budget is seventeen hundred dollars, and that's refreshments in the morning, refreshments in the afternoon, and then a light lunch in the middle, uh, and then, of course, the, the, the rental of the hall, uh, for it. We're expecting to have a maximum of a hundred people, that seventeen hundred dollars that we have out of the budget at the moment is, uh, for the hall and sixty people.
All this information, did you see this on our iPads? All the, all that, that he just said is all right there in a, in a short, little version.
I just don't know, okay, emergency management. April twenty-seventh?
April twenty-seventh.
Okay.
So no more than a hundred students, go ahead, Commissioner Scott.
Something added to your budget to get this underway until we get reimbursed?
No, um, but I will, I will have them write me an invoice for the room rental, to secure the room rental prior to the conference, and then the rest of it will, we, we will pay for it after the conference, because we won't know until two weeks before the conference exactly how many people, uh, that are going to attend.
Then go reimburse that after that.
Correct.
Hundred percent.
Hundred percent reimbursed.
Okay.
Perfect, thank you.
Yeah.
It's a great program.
No, thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Great job, Mike.
Too easy, thanks.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
We appreciate that. Mr. Blamer.
Come on up. No kidding, none that.
Transit vector fiscal twenty-five.
Gotcha.
Budget.
Pretty short, and I know I'm sweet, so. Um.
Thanks for coming.
I, thank you, um, you know, I got sick and I, I missed more than two weeks of work, I had COVID that turned into pneumonia, and I'm way behind the eight ball on this budget.
Are you okay?
Oh, I'm fine, I'm, and I got a sleep apnea machine, it's, there's a world of difference, I mean, a world of difference, I can't believe it. So, with this budget, I, I got either two twenty-four, so this was last year's, and then the two twenty-five, and I just highlighted some things, and on the state assistance, um, in twenty-four, it was only thirty-four, um, point five eight four five percent, and look at, um, two thousand and twenty-five, the state, which was a shock, uh, raised it up to forty, almost five percent increase, which is nice. It may or may not last, but.
You weren't anticipating that, correct?
No.
Say, or recall that, you, you were, you were expecting the opposite.
In the past, they tell me it was like, it used to be fifty percent, and it was as low as thirty-two at one time, so it fluctuates quite a bit. Um, the millage review is just this three O mills, and then the local operating is how much it will cost us out of our pocket to balance our budget. So for two thousand and twenty-four, it was that much money, but in reality, we did get that other three mills for two thousand and twenty-four, we're still getting it, so that shouldn't be that bad. And then for two thousand and twenty-five, without a millage increase, this is, it'd be one seventy-four approximately, all these are, these are rough figures, but, and, and till an audit is done, we don't really know. Um, so for two thousand and twenty-five, we're, we're going to hire a, a director, and the sooner the better, basically, I wish they were starting Monday. So, it was, it was discussed in our committee meeting at the, at the airport, and I think we discussed, you know, seventy thousand or something, we're, we're gonna have to pay somebody a decent wage to, to beat us directorship, and Tim has, um, you looked into some of what these other directors are making and stuff like that, so it's, it's probably still a low ball, really, but I, uh, I bumped it up from mine of forty-five to sixty-eight thousand, just to, just to cover it, or partially cover it anyway. Other than that, the only thing I saved on was, um, dispatcher part-time wages, was a mistake, or not a mistake, but it was high, uh, eighty-six thousand, two thousand and twenty-four, and we really only spent about, I think, forty-eight thousand this, in two thousand and twenty-three, we don't have many part-time dispatchers at this stage of the game, so, and, uh, they won't be at full wage even when we do get them hired, so that, that's probably in the ballpark. So, so our budget for two thousand and twenty-five, and I don't know why, but I could print this the correct amount on two thousand and twenty-four, but when I went to two thousand and twenty-five, it was rounded out, and I didn't know how to give it to not round it, so, but it was, uh, the total budget was, uh, one million, one hundred and thirty-eight thousand, seven hundred and seventy-five dollars, and then with the, um,
What was the total?
One thousand, one million, one hundred and thirty-eight thousand, seven hundred and seventy-five bucks.
For twenty twenty-five?
Yes.
I don't see that exact figure that you just read, I see one, one million, one hundred and eighty-six thousand, huh?
Yeah, because I changed it on mine, see it?
Okay.
I changed it on mine, and yours, I couldn't, I, you know, I, I, I didn't, I couldn't take the time to mess with it.
So, so what's your total, again, I'm sorry?
Um, one million, one hundred and thirty-eight thousand, seven hundred and seventy-five, and I think that says one million.
One eighty-six, seven, seven fifty. Fiscal year twenty twenty-five total budget.
So I don't know what I did there, but it's, it's the total budget, it's the next total budget, oh, um, ineligible expenses. So that would be our total budget, minus ineligible expenses is one million, one hundred and thirty-eight.
What does ineligible expenses mean?
Um, just things that we pay for that the state won't reimburse us on. One big one is, um, retirement, they won't reimburse us on anything that we're not vested in.
Looks like everything is pretty close from what you have.
It is, and, and something else is, um, it says a seven thousand dollar decrease, well, I didn't catch that either, but it's an increase for this year, it was a decrease last year, so the total budget was, the, the increase was twenty-four thousand dollars.
And then you have wage.
And then wage, wages with seven thousand of it.
Questions?
So the wage should be the opposite, should be a seven thousand increase instead of a decrease?
Yes, yeah. And I just didn't catch it, like I said, I was behind the eight ball, and I was trying to get it out to Tim to at least get you guys to review it the best you could, because I had a lot of work to do when I came back.
Is, do you have to have this approved?
Oh, yeah.
What timeframe?
Oh, yeah, it's gotta be approved next week, it's gotta be, all the other work has to be done, and it has to be submitted to the state before the, before January thirty-first.
Tim, have you had an opportunity to look at this, to review this?
Just overnight, um, Ray, I would ask you to get me a corrected copy, so that we don't have the nuance, I can have those exact numbers, so when the board passes it, we have what you need to send to the.
So if I have difficulty with it printing out, I'll give you a call, maybe you can help me through it.
Well, we're, we'll get together tomorrow, two commissioners, we can.
Yeah.
Figure that out.
Yeah, and I can, and I can go over it and make some corrections, so.
Jenny, can I?
Yes, please.
Yeah, so tomorrow, uh, tomorrow afternoon, we have our transit committee meeting, so we'll be, you know, going over this in depth as well.
Yeah, because I'm taking the copies of it there too, so.
Can you see on this spreadsheet, and, and I, maybe I'm not seeing it, like, I, I see your operational expense, your total budget, I guess what? Uh, I guess I'm trying to think of my question here, the amount of money you're dealing with is a hundred, is one million, one hundred and thirty-eight dollars and, and seven seventy-five, and your operational expense, your total is only two hundred and forty-six thousand, eight hundred and fifty dollars?
The, the, the majority is wages and, um, benefits. And, um, retirement, I had to raise about five thousand dollars, um, health insurance I raised, I guess I didn't, I didn't raise health insurance, I left it the same. Another thousand on workman's comp, um, we did get rid of, um, unemployment though, so thanks to Tim.
So you guys will look this over, and can we just make sure we got a updated copy?
Yeah.
Uh, a time to look it over before next Thursday?
No, you, you show full-time employees down at the bottom, eight, up above, now is that driver, three drivers, three dispatchers, you and, and mechanic.
Yes.
That'd be the eight.
Yeah.
But then you show fourteen part-timers up top, and you only show ten down below.
Where do I got fourteen?
Well, you got ten part-time drivers and four part-time dispatchers. Says ten part-time and four part-time dispatchers.
Oh, on, on the bottom, yeah.
And on the bottom, it says ten.
Yeah.
And that's twenty twenty-five, on the twenty twenty-four, you're talking about.
And I wasn't even concerned with that, I was just concerned.
Well, that's a twenty twenty-four number?
I was just concerned with figures, um, and, and we do have, um.
Twenty twenty-four.
We have I think eleven part-timers right, right now. But to do what we're, what we're, what we're discussing and, and putting buses in the, in the Skidway Lake, um, and Rose City, Lepton area, um, it'll, it'll take, it'll take a couple more drivers, because as one bus is coming into West Branch, another one will, we, we'll be going out, we're, we're going to attempt to, uh, one of the big complaints is that people gotta wait so long, if we bring them in from, from Skidway or wherever to West Branch, and let's say they got a doctor's appointment, and you get them there at nine fifteen, and they're done by ten, they don't want to go stop shopping, they just want to go home, they gotta wait till eleven thirty, so.
That's best case scenario, they've waited till afternoon.
I know it, and this will eliminate that, and something else is that with the bus being in that area, they can shop Skidway, they can shop Rose City, because we'll drop them off, the bus will be there, and when they're ready to go, we'll pick them up and take them home, instead of them waiting another hour and a half for another bus to show up.
You have the equipment to do that?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
So you guys will bring, give us more information?
Yeah.
Sounds like you guys gotta look this over and.
Yeah.
Okay.
We've got, we've got a lot to discuss, let me tell you, we do.
Any other questions for it?
And my mind has been cranking since I got full oxygen and, uh, I've got a pile, a pile of ideas, I can tell you, you can't even imagine.
Glad you're feeling better.
I'm sleeping four or five hours a night, and I have to potty, and I get back in bed and uncomfortable, and I just think, and it doesn't bother me a bit, I feel great, um, I'm just amazed.
That's nice to hear.
So.
You ain't paying unemployment either?
Pardon me?
They ain't paying unemployment at the, so if you guys let them go, who pays?
No. Can you explain it to him, Tim?
Yeah, if, if there's, needs to be a layoff in transit, we will be sending an invoice based on whomever that might be, and whatever that benefit was. Uh, prior to this year, we were paying, I don't know if it was quarterly, annually, or how we were doing, but we were paying, um, you know, in, sending money to unemployment, laid anybody out, and yet had to continue to make those payments.
But if we do, we pay.
If we do, we pay.
Well, the, the problem is, is that decision was made, if I'm not mistaken, like, uh, December, January, and now we're paying because we just laid people off.
Yeah.
So that worked against us.
I don't think we're paying near as much.
No.
As we were.
Because we, we were paying in for years with no layoffs, and, you know, I, I don't know how that works, whether you, you, you don't get a big buildup of funding in there, do you, or?
No, we pay when the, yeah.
Exactly.
By the, by the layoff, I guess, for lack of another word, uh, and that's for whatever it is, the thirteen weeks, or however long the benefit runs.
So basically, you're, you're sticking money in there that you're never gonna, never gonna get back, so.
Well, we were hoping, we wouldn't, but again, now, it, it kind of worked.
Exactly.
Against us, but.
Well, I even have some ideas to save the county money, but that's another.
We are.
Talk about that later.
We are what, one of two counties that, that got charged that way?
I think we might have been the only one that was.
The only one?
Yeah.
Out of eighty-three, eighty-two other counties were not paying in like that, right? So, I mean, did we lead the pack, or were we behind?
I guess I didn't follow you.
Both, while you're saying, now that, you're saying it backfired, but it.
Well, that decision definitely didn't go in our favor.
Well, we're not paying as much in as we were.
Now with all them layoffs that we just did for twelve weeks, we are thirteen weeks.
Are we paying more now than our payments?
We're having to pay because we, because we laid them off.
Having to pay, paying more than our payments that we were paying.
That's an excellent question, do you have that answer?
No, that's what I'm asking.
I don't have that answer.
Okay, just ask them, we can find out.
Yeah, I'll find out, we'll get some hard numbers.
Commissioner Simmons.
I just gonna say, I think the most we can pay in an individual is seven thousand, and some of that would be less than that, because of what the wages were.
Thank you, Ray.
Thank you.
Thanks, Ray.
And I'll see you next, with, Thursday, I mean.
I'll see you tomorrow.
Items, item C, Brian Gilbert, Sheriff, related to the sergeant promotion.
Evening.
Hi.
I just wanted to bring back, yeah, to the table, the sergeant's position, and the reason why I do that is because there's a lot of movement, a lot of position to be built. And I'm, I'm just gonna go through the sequence of events. Uh, June twentieth, uh, Lieutenant Holder retired, so I needed to fill that position. So that was on the twentieth, and the twenty-eighth, I had, I, I had brought up Tom Howard to fill that void, that lieutenant spot. Okay, to fill, to fill that staff sergeant of Tom, I had brought up, uh, uh, another sergeant who filled that position. That's why we have a vacant sergeant's position. My, uh, now this started June twentieth, so that's, that's when everything was initiated, so the, the movement had to work, and, and it can't work real fast, because we got to make sure we get it right. Uh, my promotional letter, uh, for that vacancy went out in August, August fourteenth is when I drafted that letter, actually, the undersheriff drafted that letter for that position to be, uh, posted, for people to put in for that position. I had one, one individual, uh, prior to, to even this letter come, come forth, stepped up and did the extra work based on, because it needed to be done, he, he knew he was gonna put in for it, but he stepped up and did it because he is such a good sound, solid employee, he stepped up and got it done, so when this promotional letter came out, he put in for it, so that was a no-brainer, we figured we would get him, but then, short time after that, we had one other person put in for it. So that puts the brakes on, we have to back up, we got to do interviews, and we got to make sure it's done right. Uh, we did the interviews, and, uh, we determined that the individual that stepped up was the best qualified, he was, he's been there for years, he knows his job real well, very well, good, solid employee. Uh, so we made that, that, uh, determination that he's the one that probably should fill that position. This took, this took a lot of time, and we were stalled out, because after the promotional letter that was in place, we were under budget talks, so that backed us up. The budget talks are very important to us, we need to get through the budget talks, so that, that made me hold up on, on promoting this individual. So finally, after we got the budget, the way it is now, uh, we went, we went ahead and, and, and decided we need to fill that position, because I need a sergeant in every rotation that will make a sound decision, because there's a lot of people out there that won't make a decision, because they're, they're, they're afraid, they're making the wrong decision, well, I need somebody to step up per shift that's gonna make that sound decision and protect this county. So then, we put the, um, the power form out, and by the time we got around to it, it was November fourteenth, is when, when we made that, that announcement to him, that we're gonna go ahead and promote him up to help out our, our facility over there. So since then, we sent it over, um, and we got blocked, uh, not, not to proceed with that, so I'm asking the board, I'm asking you folks, this whole thing initiated back in June, June twenty, is when it initiated. Several moving parts, it has to happen, by the time we got around to it, was November fourteenth, so I'm asking for your support to, uh, to make it whole for this individual that is, is working his butt off for, for us.
Questions, comments? I'm sorry.
No, that's fine, that's fine.
Commissioners? Commissioner Scott?
Want to, sergeant at every shift, how many, how many are filled now?
Three, we need four.
Well, that's a lot too soon, the fifth.
No, the fifth would be the staff sergeant, the staff sergeant is the one that is in charge of all the sergeants.
Oh.
Brenda, I think you can relate to that, because you've been in the military, um, the chain of command is huge, we have to have somebody that's responsible for a decision that's gonna be made, because that decision could save us hundreds of thousands of dollars, if, if it's a proper decision.
This guy would be a three-striper.
Yes.
This guy's a three-striper with a rocker.
Yeah.
Commissioner Scott, go ahead.
So, so you'll have five sergeants, what you're asking for is fill a fifth position. Four, four, you got four positions for the.
I've got three sergeants right now, with a staff sergeant, I need one more sergeant to fulfill all of them, all that rotation. And the money, the money.
What position did Howard pull?
Staff sergeant.
Yeah.
And I moved somebody up, filled that right away. Yes, and that, that's, that was very important to get that one filled, because he's responsible for the function of all the sergeants.
Commissioner Wiltsey.
So, so currently, right now, then, we have some shifts at the, at the jail where you don't have a sergeant on duty.
We have one, one rotation that does not have a sergeant.
And that's where this?
That's where this individual is. Yes, sir, that's when, that's where this individual will fit into, so our people that's working at rotation will have somebody to go to and, and make them decisions, because, uh, as you know, there's a lot of decisions that need to be made over there, you know, instantly, you know, because there's a lot of, there's a lot of things going on.
How many inmates do we have right now?
Right now, we've got fifty, fifty-seven, I believe, oh, somewhere there.
How many in county?
In county, we had, I think we got nineteen, oh, and yeah, I, I would guess, I checked this morning, but I forgot. We have fifty-seven-ish, so.
You have one shift, though, where you have two sergeants, on a staff and a regular.
That staff.
I don't know what the shift, shift sergeant.
Yeah, that's, the sergeant works.
A shift.
A shift, yes.
One shift, one day shift.
Mm-hmm.
A or B, whatever, yeah.
So what, what you're saying is, when that staff sergeant is working, there's also a sergeant working.
Right, right, most generally, but the staff sergeant's got over and above duties to do. It works, it works good that way.
There's no way we could make it so that staff sergeant's also doing a dual role that day, and then that sergeant's moved over to.
No.
Where?
That staff sergeant gets days off, and when he gets that days off, then it's wide open. So, this way, this way, the function would be, there'd be, there'd be somebody, a sergeant there all the time, all the time. And that staff sergeant may go on transports or whatever, too.
Well, at the same time, you're, you're the, the big boss is there, this, uh, the, the jail administrator is there.
All the time.
Well, it's the same shift, though.
Not all the time, he's not there.
No.
He's filling in for, for the shortcomings of what's happening.
So is the staff sergeant, I gotta get all these titles here, the staff sergeant, is that a, a shift job, or is that a five-day-a-week, Monday through Friday?
Now, we got that staff sergeant working Monday through Thursday, or Tuesday through Friday. So it's.
So ten-hour days.
Yeah, correct. Yeah. Lieutenant and, and the sergeant position, administrative sergeant, staff sergeant are ten-hour days. Lieutenant's there Monday through Thursday, staff sergeant's there Tuesday through Friday, make sure we have administrative coverage in the building. The shift sergeants are twelve-hour shifts, will they?
Right, they're regular shift.
They're regular.
Three-on-one, week four on the next.
Yeah.
And part of the rotation are twelve.
Commissioner Simmons.
Like, um, Sheriff Gilbert says, uh, you have to have someone in charge, and he can't be part of the, part of the group. He has to be here, with his people underneath him here, he can't be higher rank and be right here with the rest of them, it won't work, it won't work, I'll guarantee you that, it will not work. I've seen it happen.
I don't disagree with your, with your, um, comment, however, with the current budgetary restraints and the layoffs that we just did, and the conversations that are, are occurring, I'm just not comfortable making this decision quite yet, um, I come in asking, um, that's my personal opinion. I just don't know that I'm presently in a position to, to be able to, uh, make this type of decision with, with, uh, where we're at financially.
So it's in our budget, it's built into the budget, that position.
How many people have we called, uh, back that were laid off? I had a resident, uh, ask me that.
We had one that moved on, and we pulled one back that we laid off, so.
I had somebody ask me the other night, so there's only been one? Full-time, right?
Mm-hmm.
Do you have anything to add to that?
No, in case, it ain't gonna cost us, he's got his money. Not gonna cost us, it's already budgeted, and we let the rest of them do it.
Just think there's a lot of important decisions to be made over the next couple of weeks. I don't.
Now, does, oh, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead.
Does that make a vacancy then of corrections officers, then?
No, you're just moving one up to, to a sergeant's position.
Okay, so you don't have to hire a corrections officer?
No. Just promoting, the, the individual is, is gonna be, i- if it's approved, that he'll be getting paid for what he's doing. And the responsibility is gonna be more on to him, because then he's gonna hold that position, so.
Any other thoughts? Thoughts? Commissioner Wilson, did you have something?
Well, we, you know, we've had this conversation a little while back and, you know, I brought up the fact of. You know, of, of course, you know, um, the financial situation we're in right now and. That is uh something we all are very aware of. But then also, you know, there's the liability side. Um, you know, currently right now, there's just an individual who's on the same level playing field as his coworkers. Making the decisions and obviously these coworkers that are on the shift with him, they must all feel comfortable for him to do that. But, so I guess liability-wise, it's kind of what I'm a little concerned about.
So I guess this, this was put on the table. In order for this to be brought back, somebody has to take it off the table, correct?
That resolution is now defunct. It does no longer exist. So this would require. In quotes, a new resolution that you would consider.
So I guess I'm gonna ask each one of you individually, would you like to have this put on for next week as a resolution for sergeant position? My answer is no, but that's me. Commissioner Scott?
I don't. I don't know.
It's to put it on for resolution, yes or no?
I'm not gonna give you a yes or no answer. I'm gonna tell you, I don't know. And I can, I can do that. This is discussion. This isn't a resolutions. I don't have to.
I'm just asking if you wanna put on for a resolution. I'm not asking you to vote for it or.
I know what you're asking.
Commissioner Wilson?
Uh, yes.
I'll come back to you.
Yes.
Commissioner Rayhale?
Yeah.
Commissioner Simmons? I guess you got our three. Okay, thanks guys.
Thanks so much.
Have a good night.
Discussion items, uh inmate medical service bid opening.
Okay, this is the first time we've had an RFP issued after the uh. Purchasing policy was amended, so. Proposals are here. So my question to you is, and I think this would be the simplest way to do it. I can open them and read the. The amounts to you, which is all we're doing tonight. And then there's one that came by mail, so it will need to be scanned. We'll get both of the full documents to you uh and we'll look them over and have discussion. I believe it's the February one, maybe the whole. If you want to have the vendors here and being that there are only two, I would suggest that that would be a wise use of your time. Uh, to have the vendors actually here and then I'll give you a chance to ask questions and uh interaction with, with the. To who prepared it. So that's what I suggest we do though, that we go through the openings, read them.
Yep.
And we uh then uh move on, you know, to the next meeting.
Okay.
If that's all right.
You guys okay with that?
Sounds good.
So there are actually three responses. The first response came from Prime Care Medical out of uh. Uh Harrisburg, Pennsylvania. And they wrote saying that they would like to make a proposal, but they have too much work now. But please keep them on our list should we ever need another one. But it's a reply, so it's, it's there. Um, second one came by mail. Uh, it is uh. Date and timestamp through the post office. It was delivered prior to the deadline. It was uh delivered on uh January eleventh. The deadline was eleven o'clock on January twelfth. And this proposal is from TMD Correctional Services. Envelope opens anyway, me. This is called being foiled by technology.
Probably do a smaller one, alright.
I hurt myself here. Payment for the night is over. The total compensation on the TMD is one hundred ninety-one thousand three ninety-three.
One ninety, one ninety.
TMD, one ninety-one, three nine-three.
Where are they at of?
What's your current?
Oh, that's our current one?
Yes.
Okay.
You can hold late.
Yeah. That's your current on your.
Okay, thank you.
So the second proposal was sent online. It's been printed but not looked at. It's from Advanced Correctional Healthcare. Date and time stamped when it came through an email and like the previous one, it did arrive on uh January eleventh. So, Advanced Correctional Healthcare is out of Franklin, Tennessee. The hundred fourteen pages. You'll have plenty of reading.
When this request went out for bid did, were specifics asked for?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, it was um.
Okay, thank you.
I am concerned because it has escalators in that, so I'll have to get into it, read some of the uh details or perhaps not. Uh, there are a couple of options. Option one is two hundred fifty-five thousand three seventy-three. And seventy-one cents. Their second option. Three hundred thirty-five thousand six forty and ninety-one cents. You know, it looks like there are just two options that they presented. So I will uh get the, get this one scanned. Uh, this one's already in PDF form. I'll get them out to you and just look for them tomorrow. Uh, I'll give you plenty of time to look at them. Again, the RFP told the. Those making proposals to expect to be here on February first. Uh, and so unless I hear otherwise, we'll. Ask them to, to arrive. And then you'll have opportunity to ask questions. I'll uh also look these over and just make sure that it complies with what we've asked for in the RFP. Uh, and we'll note any nuance that might be in there.
Perfect. Just gonna see if there's a compare similarities there. Prescriptions will be, prescriptions will be a good big thing. Cost, I'm sorry. Are you unsure? Go ahead, sir.
I was just asking, tend to include the email on those.
Absolutely. Go ahead.
Is there a copy of the request, the bid request online?
Uh, it is on our, probably on our webpage, but since it's now expired, Tom might have taken it off. But I'll make sure that's put in the. Yeah, no problem.
Perfect. Thank you. Thanks, guys. Um, item B, anybody have a case missing?
Why you said thanks, guys?
Item B, Housing Commission appointments.
They've got uh, actually, I think we have seven applications that are here. There was one that was added uh. Late today. Uh, individual had difficulty for whatever reason, working the. Yes. Uh, now, just to refresh the board's memory, this is a special committee of the board. Uh, that um, that you create. There's no statute that we're attempting to follow. The idea initially was that we uh have representatives from the city of West Branch, Ogumon Township and West Branch Township, as well as the county. Uh, because it is a, considered then a standing committee under your rules of procedure, you do want to appoint at least one commissioner. Uh, which I don't think will be difficult. And then uh from there, if um, you know, resolution is passed, naming members. This group can begin meeting uh like rate away. Uh, so if this is passed next Thursday, they could meet as early as Friday, although I think that might be. Uh, a little too much to expect, but uh nevertheless, I do have had contact with a few who have applied and they are anxious to get going.
Yeah, uh, majority of, I shouldn't say, a few of these, I guess, that uh when we were talking about this committee, um. Were here and talked to us about it. Uh, Mr. Roger Dotzer and uh Penny.
Can I add to?
Sure, Commissioner.
Um, there's, there's a few more people um that I think would, would be really beneficial for this committee. Uh, we've reached out to them. Uh, another member on here has reached out to a couple of people and we feel they'd be very beneficial as well. Um, but we can always add, correct?
Yes. And you can reduce the size if you ever feel you need to do that.
Okay, cause we definitely, like, I'd love to see um some participation from someone around the Rose City area as well. And I do have someone in mind that I'm kind of been trying to get them to fill out the application, so. But if we can add, then I was gonna ask for an extension, but if we can add to it, I mean, we could move forward now and get this started.
Right.
I guess when we were having these discussions here a few weeks back, what, what number did we throw out there as far as, did, did we throw out a number?
I don't remember that we limited it, but I can check that here.
I think the only one I was not familiar with when I was Nancy Tyree, I was just not familiar with her name when I looked at all these. So you need these, I guess, thoughts, guys? We just need these on for resolution, correct?
Yeah.
I don't, I, obviously they all showed interest.
I mean, kinda like I say, knowing that we do have some more people that could be very beneficial, should we?
Well, I was just asking if we, oh, you mean to wait for, to go forward with even these names that are currently on here?
Just kinda wanna see you guys' thoughts, I.
No, I, I say, it, like, I was just wondering what we had originally said. I, I think these people took time and effort to go ahead and fill this out. We've talked about this a few months back, weeks back anyways. Um, we can add to it.
Okay, I mean, there's nobody more.
I guess they're wanting to already get started.
Yeah, I mean, I wanna drive.
I hesitate this for, for more weeks. Commissioner Simmons, go ahead.
Has everybody looked at these applications closely?
Um, I looked at them. I looked at the names and I looked at their uh, I looked at their uh qualifications, I guess. Why wouldn't you?
All the way through the entire application?
Um, page by page by each one, I'm gonna say no.
You may wanna do that.
Go ahead. Did you have something to add? We're talking about them.
I'm just saying, you may wanna look at. Everybody's application in entirety.
Well, you have something to point out to us, please do. They put it on public knowledge. It's on the, it's on the computer.
I got someone there with traffic violations and DWIs. That's a concern to me.
Okay.
Well, do they need a ride to the meeting then?
Just tells me something about it personally.
I guess I'm, I'm looking at that and that's pointed out?
Yes, right on the application.
Well, then let's just bring up a vote for each one of them then next week. Instead of entirety.
The third one.
I see it. Again, it's public, it's, it's out there. Um. I guess everybody, I thank you for pointing that out. I, I looked at names and I looked at certain things, but. Is that what you guys would like to do next week?
I think all these, all these people have a lot to offer. They're, they're committed to our area. Um, I think they have a lot to offer for this um committee and I have no problem with any of them.
I guess my question was again, was, is do you want, I, 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 I guess let's see, put these on individually uh for next week? They're on there for a reason. Those questions are on there for a reason. They're standard questions. Everybody take a look at all of them before next Thursday.
Fine with me. We all agreed to have the committee in it already. So it's just a matter of putting people on it.
Okay. RV Park Management Agreement. Oh, go ahead.
One quick comment on the. Uh, resolution that put the committee together is, it is open-ended, so you don't have a limit. By our law.
Okay, thank you. So that means we'll be adding to that. Um, item C, RV Park Management Agreement.
You got a copy of that in the. Documents for the meeting. Uh, this is um, I think Commissioner Scott, you can correct me if I'm wrong. But I think it's a duplicate of last year's contract. I don't know that there were any changes.
I don't believe there was.
I don't see it on here. What's it under? I looked for it and I, I don't have it. Unless I missed, I don't think I did.
I am completely lost at the moment. I don't know what I did.
RV Park Management Agreement is not on my iPad.
Yes, I have. Mine's the budget committee.
Yeah, I didn't, I don't see it on mine either.
I will uh.
But maybe I missed it, which I did. Okay, so can we have that on? Is there a deadline on this? Is this something, is this an annual agreement, Commissioner Scott?
I believe it is. It, I believe it's a, a cop, or cop, basically a copy of last year.
Has there been any issues or concerns, any problems?
There's nothing.
Is there a deadline that we have to? At least, I'd like to see it before we vote on it.
I'm aware. I don't know why you can't before we move on.
Okay. Commissioner Simmons, what's that?
Nothing.
Is there been issues with the management at the RV park?
No.
Oh, okay, okay. I didn't think there was.
Did you have something to add?
No, absolutely nothing.
Okay, Tim, did you have something?
Just a question, did, I wanna make sure, clarify, did you want this on the next committee of the whole or did you want it on the regular meeting next week? Being that you haven't seen it yet.
I like, is there a deadline? Cause I, I would like to see it before we vote on it. I mean, obviously the problems or concerns.
He gets it to you before next meeting, would that be enough for you to review?
Is it lengthy?
No, I think it's two pages at the most.
Our legal team has looked at it.
Right, um. And I think three contracts ago, I think when they reviewed it, but yes.
So Commissioner Simmons, you're on the, our uh park. Uh, Rex, you're on that committee, correct? With Commissioner Scott, so then obviously he doesn't have a problem approving this, do you?
Moving what?
Approving the RV park management agreement.
Oh, no, I thought you were still talking about the housing committee.
No.
No, no. Yeah, remember, I don't have my hearing agent tonight. You gotta speak loudly.
So, please.
Go ahead. No, I don't have any problem.
Okay, so then I, again, I would like to see it. That's not a problem.
Just send it out there, everybody, please, Tim.
Commissioner David, can we go back to the Housing Commission topic real quick?
Did you have something to add?
Yeah, that's why I'm asking back. Um, so I think it's important that we need to keep in mind. You know, we, we gotta look at the individuals and what people are doing in the community. We only have so many people. That are active, willing to take a stance, willing to do things in our community. I've really seen that over this past year especially. And I'm just asking that we don't use personal feelings to negatively affect one of these candidates. That's all I'm asking. These people, all I, on here, all I feel will be very beneficial. We just. Should not use personal feelings to make a decision. Moving forward. I'm done.
Thank you. But, but I, I, I hear you and I appreciate that, but, but I think we all just uh. Some things are, were pointed out and I just think we need to look at these and, and then make our own.
Things that could be planted.
Make our own. Make our own decision. May, stop you guys, make your own decision.
I, I know that.
And we're all entitled to make our opinions and our decisions.
Everything.
So. General discussion, there's a, there's a reason that this application is online and there's a reason these questions are asked. Item D, General Discussion, Zoning Ordinance Enforcement. Mr. Vitor, come on up. How are you? I didn't see anything on our, my iPad related to this neither. Did I miss it?
I was just, I think it was emailed yesterday about this.
Emailed, but it's not on for the meeting tonight, correct, on our?
There's, there's nothing that's in the folder.
No, nothing in the folder. This has the, the administration, the enforcement procedures and the zoning ordinance.
Are you having an issue? Is there a reason that this is coming about?
Um, I. The email I received from Tim was, after responding to Commissioner.
Okay.
To answer your question, we have two right now, two issues that have been uh to say um. Been fairly time-consuming.
I received a lengthy phone call over the weekend, I'm assuming from one of those individuals.
Possibly, yes. So real quickly, I, I thought it also, I was bringing the enforcement, just the, the proceduralness and the zoning ordinance, which is what is followed. Um, and, and I'll just briefly touch on this and you, you can go through and read it a little bit more. In-depth in your own free time as well, but um enforcement twenty-one point one, violation is a nuisance. One just basically defines what a violation and a penalty, and penalties are. Um, number two, the inspection of violation. Someone receives a. A um complaint. Um, and generally, just, just to be clear, most complaints that I receive are. I require them to fill out a complaint form or it's in the form of an email that has their name and the information in it. I do not drive around looking for complaints. Um, occasionally though, however, if I see a safety issue or. And a, and a lot of occasions, an unpermitted structure or something. And a lot of occasions, an unpermitted structure or something that sticks out like a sore thumb, then, um, I will pursue it without having to have a complaint. But for the most part, the majority are, these are complaint based, they've come from individuals, from property owners, um. Uh, so what happens in that particular case, I mean, there's a correction period, so. And three, it says there are all violations shall be corrected within a period of thirty days after the order to correct is issued by the zoning administrator. Or a such longer period of time not to exceed six months, as the zoning administrator shall determine. Um, so to break that down, basically, anytime I get a complaint, I'm looking at it from a six month timeframe, so. Obviously, I have to do an inspection on that. I've got to go on, there's a lot of research that goes along with that. Um, and and point blank, if if it's something that I can't prove, um. Then it makes it difficult to to issue the complaint, so unfortunately, um, I I don't. If for any reason I have to go in front of the judge or present something in front of the judge, um, I'm gonna make sure that we have proof, number one. And number two, we've also talked to the county's council about it as well too, so. So generally, what happens if there's a violation, I see that it's an active violation or it's. Um, something that needs correction, then I will issue a correction letter, um. From that day, they have thirty days to to correct the violation or we'll or we'll move on into basically what I would call the penalty phase, so. Penalty phase basically is I have, I have the authority to issue, um, civil infraction tickets. Um, first offense is a fifty dollar fine, second offense is two hundred fifty dollar fine, a third offense and everyone afterwards is a five hundred dollar fine, so. Um, those can be increased, civil fines can be imposed for repeated violations that would would occur within a six month period, so. Um, so that's basically how we we, how I process and get complaints is it's through. Is through the property owner or the individual that handles it. In in some occasions, if there is a. And I I can't remember if I've ever had to issue a stop work order before, if for for any reason on. On the back page on number five, it does give the procedure for if we had to issue a stop work order, um. Those would be issue if, um. Provisions of this ordinance or is in an unsafe and dangerous manner where such worker you shall be immediately stopped, so. Usually that would be pretty extreme. If it's a health or safety issue, then we would go that route. Normally a correction letter gives the thirty days, so. The only, the only difference there is, is it will sort of here. The number three, a violation not corrected within this period shall be reported to the open court prosecuting attorney who shall initiate prosecution procedures, so. Generally with my, um, when I issue a civil infraction, I take them directly to district court. To the clerk of district court and they process them through the district court, so. From there, things can run from there.
Questions? Commissioner Wuncie, did you have something in particular?
Um, yeah, so I I did. I've I've talked to Ryan, um, the the year I've been here, um, I respect Ryan. I think Ryan does a great job. I think he's. He's intelligent at what he does, but I had a county resident come to me with some concerns. So I did talk to Ryan and I've talked to Tim about it and, um, I just asked him to put this on the agenda for tonight. And because I just, the main thing is, a lot of this for me is is out of my, out of my wheelhouse. Um, but I just want to make sure that. Apples for apples, from one person to the next person, one business to the next person, that we're just, we're being fair across. Cross the lines, and that's what I talked to, to Ryan about.
And 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 I understand that, and and to be honest with you, um. There there there's a lot out there. Um, unfortunately, I don't have the time or the manpower of the staff to to physically comb the county to look for these things. So we do rely on complaint for that, um, and it is unfortunate, um. There are things going on out there that we don't know about, that we don't know about, but if it's brought to our attention, we do look into it, um. And it is. It's the least favorite part of my job, and unfortunate part of it is, is the majority of these complaints come in the summertime, which is when we're the busiest. Or when I'm the busiest as well too, so, um.
I think by looking at this, it's it's a process. I mean, obviously, it's a pretty timely process.
It's a process and. It varies, it's, um, it it's it's never a personal thing for me. It's never personal against anybody. It's it's, this is what the ordinance says and. This is what needs to be done. Majority of individuals that I have to issue correction orders to are very good about it. It's a lot of times, it's, you know. Unpermitted structures that they didn't know about. We didn't know we had to get a permit. They they turn around and they get the permit. Occasionally, I get an individual that just will not comply, so. And those particular cases, we we discuss that. I will discuss that with our attorney and. It doesn't always mean we're gonna go to court or cost money for for everybody. But I think most of you know, any anytime, anything goes to court, regardless if it's here at the county or personal or any, that's. Really, they don't feel the legal benefit from that are are the attorneys, so. It 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 is better for us to.
Stay out of court.
To stay out of. When I do talk to individuals and individuals are willing to work with me, then I do work with them, um, they're not issuing. I'm not issuing tickets on day thirty one. A lot of times I give people repeated notices. Or if someone needs an extension of time to comply, then we'll give it to them as long as they're communicating, so it's not, um. We're not writing, we're not writing tons of tickets. I have done, I have written tickets and I have some people out there that.
I I don't have any questions. I guess of my, I I guess I'm gonna refrain from that. I do have a question. When we get these phone calls? Um, I guess we're all sitting here. Um, I again, I got a pretty extensive phone call. I believe it was Sunday morning, quite early, actually. Um, and I think it's from the same individual, um. What would you direct us? Because obviously a hundred percent correct, this is not our our area of expertise. We seem to kind of, uh. Be the go to when when people don't really know what to do and when they're frustrated. What are you asking us as far as commissioners?
I usually direct them towards me. Um, a lot of times people, and and it's unfortunate, because a lot of times people don't want to put their name on something. They don't want their neighbor to know or like a person down the street that they're the one complaining, um. My experience with it is nine times out of ten, people know who's filed complaint, so I do not give out that information. If someone foils that information, then I provide it to Tim and Tim handles it accordingly, so. If if they don't feel comfortable with that, I tell them to talk to their township. Um, I've taken many of complaints from. I've taken many complaints from many township officials as well too, um, so. That's, that's what I have encouraged. If someone talks to you, send them to me, um. Send them to their township, um, depends on the complaint as well too. One of our current complaints is, um. There's a separation between zoning and building department, so, um, I don't dive into the building side of it. The building department doesn't dive in the zoning side of it, um, and. There's some misinformation out there as well too.
I I think it's just, I again, this is not our expertise whatsoever, just being very cautious with our verbiage, so it doesn't put us at a liability standpoint.
Yeah, we are not, um. Obviously, there are two sides to each story, um. My job is not to listen to, to the noise, it's to look at the facts of it, um. For the most part, it's usually pretty cut and dry, um. It's a structure or it's a building or it's 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 a use that's happening. It's, um. Very evident for me to see that and it's pretty, pretty easy for me to find out if, for instance, if a building has been permitted or not. Satellite imagery, I can look to see if it was there and, you know, in twenty eighteen or if it appeared in twenty twenty two. There are occasions when I can't prove that, so, um.
But really, most of the time it's use. In in zoning.
No, no, it it usually it's not. It's usually, um, I do a lot of fence complaints, um, a lot of. Um, structural complaints.
But I think the probably the most misconceived portion of it is the use.
Is the use.
Because use doesn't, you don't look at use like you look at a building.
Sure, sure.
I sat on planning commission for three terms, six years. I did this, I was a zoning administrator at township level. Uh, I've done exactly this. I've received all the complaints, whether I lived in the township and got it or I was a commissioner. We've opted to, the county has opted to do zoning. We don't have to do zoning. You can be unzoned if you want. And that means that people will build anything, anywhere. Any kind of business can go anywhere. You can have, you can have adult bookstores right next to schools because you don't have any zoning for it. Okay, you can build a stamping plant in the middle of a neighborhood because you don't have any zoning. Here in Oklahoma County, we opted to have zoning. Now, I really would like townships to take on zoning themselves. And I've said that many times. We only have the city of West Branch and the township of. West Branch and the township of Edward, the only ones that does their own zoning. I wish them more would. If they even combined together, because I said it many, many times, we're making zoning rules for. Foster Township that has one farm in it. As the same as in your township and Logan Township that has mostly all farms and not much lakes. Like they do in Foster, but we have to make the same rule apply.
That's fair.
In every direction. Now, if there is like, say, hey, take Richland, Logan and. Churchill and put, and maybe even Cummings and put them all together because they got more things in common. And maybe Rose Township and Foster Township could combine because they have things differently in common. You know, like farmland is what I'm mostly saying, okay? But since we do have zoning, we have, we zone uses. So manufacturings in this area, industrials in this area, residentials in this area, lakefront is here. That kind of thing, and we we opt to make sure that those areas. Have that type of occupancy. And when the use changes, when somebody wants to put in that stamping plant in the middle of a neighborhood. You know, well, if you're looking, if you look back, what, twenty five years ago? When they opened the adult bookstore up.
Yeah.
Well, we didn't have a rule on it.
Yeah.
And when they finally got to it. You had to allow the one that opened where it was. But going forward, they made it, you had to open industrial areas. You know, now, now it's the pot shops. They're opening up all over, all over Michigan, all over the place, you know, and and communities are racing to. Where are you gonna put them? Where do you want them? Some people are, you know. Well, reacting different, different manners, but, um.
Which ironically is the one use, anything with marijuana as far as dispensaries, grow facilities, is the one use that we as a.
Can you speak up, please?
It's the one used to marijuana that we as a county cannot regulate.
Right, right. Right.
Thank you, Ryan. There's no, there's a, uh, item six, public comment. You'll have an opportunity. Thanks. Item C, military class. I see you provided us this spreadsheet. Commissioner Simmons? Is this, is this what we were gonna talk about on military class?
Uh, we were talking about. Yeah, a couple of things, um, yeah, what Commissioner Simmons did was, um. Took the conversation at the budget committee meeting and put it on a nice spreadsheet, uh, so we did a. Stuff, a snapshot of just how many villages, uh, we're talking about, and at that meeting, there was conversation about. What were the target election dates that each of the groups wanted to place their villages on? So this is a very good spreadsheet to show that. We've got a couple of things that, um, you'll you'll particularly need to talk about because of deadlines. Uh, we have one more meeting on Thursday next week. If we want to place anything on the May ballot, uh, and this is not the language that you need. But is the notice of intent that you sent to the clerk that says we want to place this village, or we intend to, uh, on the ballot. Um, so there were two, uh, that became, um, the higher priority, and correct me if I'm wrong, but, uh. Two that we felt needed to be addressed right now. First one was the Headley override. The second one, uh, in conversation, uh, with the clerk today, the animal shelter asked to be placed on the May, uh, ballot as well. So those are the two that are the top priorities, if you will, right now. Um, we did have conversation about, um, Headley override. About, um, listing the the services that would be eliminated if it did not pass. And I had opportunity really think about this over the weekend. I talked to Commissioner Simmons about it earlier today. Uh, I personally, and this is me speaking, I think it would be a mistake to say. Food services will be eliminated if this village doesn't pass, and I say that because between now and then. Or between now and the time we adopt the twenty twenty five budget, this is a very fluid situation. Things are going to change. And I think it would be a mistake to put yourselves in a corner right now and say, absolutely, these are the things that we're going to cut. Where in fact, with the Headley override, the entire general fund, uh, is impacted by that. So there may be, uh, services that, yes, that will be reduced, uh, and even in some mandated services. What we put into that through the budget can be reduced. Uh, but that's a conversation that you want to have as a group of five, determine what your priorities are and then make those reductions accordingly. So my suggestion would be rather than to say these will be eliminated, that these are the services that will be impacted. Uh, through the general fund, and that's a very easy list for us to come up with. Now, that's encompasses an awful lot. But this is how you do your budgeting. You look at it comprehensively. You look at, uh, if we reduce this, what does that do to the revenue flow? If we don't reduce this, what will that do to wages? Uh, you know, all of those things that you go over, uh, and to say on, um. January twenty fifth, I think is when we meet, to say in January twenty fifth, we absolutely know these things are going to be eliminated. Uh, I just don't think you want to make that your platform. Now, you can, but you'll be held to it, and so anything that might change between now. And say summer, uh, maybe there's a grant that comes through, maybe there's some other, uh, revenue source that, uh, we see. Well, you've made a commitment to cutting that service, and I don't think you really want to do that yet. There will be a time when you adopt the budget, you will definitely be making that determination. But I think right now, though, it's just too early for you to absolutely say one hundred percent, this is what we're going to do.
I make a comment? We can list on there, uh, how much will we have to be taken off the general, off, off, off the general fund budget? You know, could, you know, and if it doesn't pass, it probably be. Million dollars or a little bit more. That's how much the but general budget, general fund would have to be reduced. We can say that. And it will have, a- anything's up for grabs. Reductions, disappearance, everything's up to, up for grabs, depending on. Uh, like, uh. Tim said, there could be grants that come through that support the whole thing. Uh, anything could happen. So I would say support like this X amount of dollars are gonna have to be reduced. From the general fund budget. Period.
Can I make a comment?
Commissioner Wuncie?
Um, well, first off, the the meeting last Friday was very, very beneficial. It was nice to see all the stakeholders that were there. Um, I want to start with the one point first, and I think we've learned, uh, again, the hard way. Looking at this, I mean, complete voter exhaustion to the extreme. So what do we need to learn from this? We need to learn, we have to stagger this. We have to figure a way that we're staggering these villages. In a way that's not all coming at one time, because this is, this is excessive. This is, this is big. This is not something that anyone wants to look at, but we're smack right in the face with it. So that's one thing, and that's one I think Tim can help with, and we can, we we need to get that figured out, so we don't keep fighting this. And then the second part, I I I do see what Tim is saying, um, regarding, you know, being held to certain things. But, you know, if we just say, well, if if Headley restoration doesn't pass, you know, one point, two million dollars is gonna come out of the budget. A lot of people will be like, oh, that's a lot of money, but still it doesn't hit that that hard to them at home because it's one point two million dollars. Well. Well, what? I mean, I still think that we should have an idea, and I think we do, of what entities of the county are gonna be affected. If we don't pass this Headley restoration. I think we pretty much know that. I mean, we don't have to say they're gonna be deleted. But they're negatively gonna be affected. They're gonna be, they're gonna be. But they're negatively gonna be affected. They're gonna be, they're gonna be cut at some point, you know?
I mean, so, I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, no, you're fine. I just, I just think there needs to be a little more conversation on that. Um, but, uh, we also talked with the Headley, um, that we're forming a committee. Cause we're gonna raise money for, for marketing for it. Um, so it was a very, very beneficial meeting. And I, I think Brenda's doing a great job as the chairman of that. And I think next month we'll get back to, you know, now that we have somewhat of a strategy, now we'll get back to each one of our departments and we can focus more on, on that. So all in all, real good stuff. Uh, I don't want to get too far away from these villages. It's, like I said, voter exhaustion to the extreme and I'm, I'm nervous, I'm nervous about it. We've got a lot, we need these to pass.
I, I, I'll wait till you're done. I think we need to be very concerned about all of these villages passing. With the current state that the county's in, and residents are in. Um, you know, February's got two villages on it. I have not seen, uh, the sheriff is at one of my townships. Um, I've not seen any promotion. And maybe I've missed it, but my eyes are pretty open most of the time. Any education, any promotion, and that's five weeks away. I, 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 again, I know people are, uh, really struggling. I think this is extremely beneficial to actually see this in front of us, to see all of these villages that, uh, residents will see on the milli- or on the ballots. People are struggling right now. Commissioner Simmons?
You know, and, uh, Commissioner Wilson talked about now at the same time. So when we, when people put these villages on, they wanna stagger the dates. Some could be four years, some could be six years, it's gonna be two years, some would be, and that's how you stagger them, so you don't have them all come up the same year. And that's what happened in this case. For some reason, uh, everything's coming up the same year. Some of these have renewals and some of them are new. So, um, the best we can hope for is to have, have it staggered when the villages expire. So they're not all coming up like they are this year. I mean, this is astronomical this year. But it is because of the, when they expire, a lot of them.
Commissioner Mayhew, did you have something?
Can I add one?
Go ahead.
I'm sorry.
Commissioner Scott, do you have something?
Well, I was here. I was not here, in my, I was not here in the term that they put the Headley rollback on the time before in sixteen. I got elected in twenty sixteen, so I started in seventeen. And we, and so it, it failed. And the decision, you were here with me, I, I was here with you, we sat right next to each other. And, and we had, and the, the board had to say, we gotta bite the bullet. We said we're gonna cut this stuff, we gotta cut it. Otherwise, we're not gonna have any credibility. And we cut it, we cut it all. Everything that was on that list, we cut. MSU, and boy, did that roll, that wave come rolling in.
Got their own village.
Right, nine-one-one, that was the biggest one. And we sat up there, we sat up there in the circuit courtroom and had that big meeting up there. And somebody even asked, if it, if it fails, are you gonna cut nine-one-one completely? And I said, well, I, we're gonna try to, we'll try to work something out. I was, I was damned for that. Even got, I even got a competitor in the, in the race against me because I made that comment. So I would, I would heed the same advice that Tim said. Be careful saying what you will cut. Because you will, if it will not pass, you will have to cut it no matter what. Now, reduce, this is a different thing. You don't have to be really certain on reduce, right down to the particulars, but be careful what, how you say it. I don't, I never like, I never like to make decisions based on the fear of you making me, making me fear a cut. I don't, as a, as a voter, I'm just speaking as a voter. I don't like that advertisement.
What, can I add on to that? I think the main thing, focus is no, we don't want to create any fear. We need to create a consistent message, and that's education of what could be lost. And I do agree, we need to watch on the specifics of that. But what I was gonna say is, I was gonna ask Karen, if Karen has anything to say on the topic, because Karen was a big instrumental push for the two thousand sixteen Headley that failed, which was very close. So while, while we're talking about this, Karen, do you have anything to add to?
Um, well, I can tell you, I reached out, Ross Common recently tried to promote this in their county of restoration. And their controller told me that they believe it failed because they did not offer what services would be lost in the education part to the community. They feel like that's an area that if they had a list of services that they could share with the community that could be reduced or are at risk, that maybe they would have been able to pass that restoration. That was a tip she gave me for our next avenue of how.
Do you know how much it failed by?
We failed by a hundred and thirty-one.
No, I mean Ross Common.
I don't, I don't know what their figure was, but ours was, I did just send.
You said a hundred and thirty.
Hundred and thirty votes.
And, and you guys promoted that a lot, I recall that. That's every Friday night.
Every Friday night. I love my T-shirt.
Papers, I seen it in the Ogumal Herald. I, I mean, you guys really, really, really promoted that. Yes. Yes, Commissioner Simmons?
The reason that passed, Karen and, and, and that group did a great, great job. And there's no doubt in my mind, it would have passed, but the newspaper put in there and it couldn't be a rebuttal on it. Went said the only people that'd be paying extra taxes are homestead property. And when I talked to people, they said, no, I'm not voting for it, it's only for homestead property. I'm not voting for that. And that was totally misinformation, because everybody's property would have been taxed, not just homestead. And that's why that failed, because they did an excellent job above and beyond, put hours and hours into that. And passed it by a hundred and thirty-seven votes, not passing, especially with what the newspaper had in the paper.
A, a lot of people don't, don't even know since February.
Do you want to ask the sheriff?
I, I guess what is your guys', we, we weren't, we weren't specifically talking about that individually at that point in time, but we could even have that on here. If that doesn't pass in February, thrown on one of these May, August or, or November, you know, we're gonna have some tough decisions. Some very tough decisions. What did, what did you guys, did you guys want a decision on this? Well, I guess what were you looking for here? Just conversation?
We, we said we'd bring this information to you. I would suggest so that, uh, we do add the Headley override and the animal shelter to Thursday. So that we can get that in the pipeline. I will talk to the clerk to make sure my understanding's correct. We actually have to have the ballot language, that's what you'll see in the resolution next week. But I, I don't think that's right. I think we should say a notice of intent at this point.
What is that?
You want to talk to Allison?
What is the animal shelter? Are you from the animal shelter? Come on up. That was my question. That's where I was just headed, is, can you tell me about the inner animal shelter?
The animal shelter is looking for a, sorry, didn't realize. The animal shelter is looking for point two mills. Um, and we, point two, over six years, because we are going to not be in the four-year rotation. Um, and it is for operational costs. Um, we struggle on a monthly basis to keep our doors open. Um, we've had grants, we've had donors, we've had everything. It is a five oh one C three. We have no, um, consistent funding. And our building is now twenty years old. Um, there are lots of, we can, we, we talked to the sheriff's department on a regular basis, um, regarding our animal control. Um, I know he's a part-time animal control man, but, um, we do a lot of animal control um, for the county, so we are really looking for something that consistently keeps us at least in the black. Um, so that's what our goal is.
You currently do not have a millage, correct?
We do not. We have never, they've never once even thought about it. And then we just kinda, we met with Tim, Tom Kesh and I. Um, the board, uh, voted on Monday to do the point two for six years. Um, that would be our option.
I have a question. When you made that decision in point two for six years, did you take your budget into consideration? Would this village cover it?
Yes.
Okay, that's all I want to know.
Yep, that is our, um, our goal is to just, I mean, we're not looking for, you know, all sorts of upgrading or anything like that. We just need operating costs. And to give our, our director at least a livable wage at this point.
But there hasn't been some issues and because that place is old now, and they've had some recent repairs out there that were pretty significant.
Audits and things from the state and a lot of times cost quite a bit to get things up, up, um, upgraded and to code, um, to their codes. It's obviously building codes, but.
Commissioner Wilson, did you have something?
Um, you had mentioned, I guess I wasn't aware of this. So you guys do animal control, like you go out to residences and?
She's not supposed to, but yes. I mean, because the, the animal control officer is part-time. We get a lot of drop-offs, we get a lot of, um, she gets them dropped off at her home. So there's a lot of that. Um, she uses her personal vehicle, um, for trips back and forth to Flint to, um, span neuter on a monthly basis. She doesn't get mileage, she doesn't get, yeah.
This is a comment about the last trip. It took her like three hours to get down there, crying in the parking lot when she got there. The weather's bad, took half and a half hours to get back.
Yeah.
Uh, it, it's, it's.
With, with the vehicle full of cats. So, yeah, it's, she's, she's a wonderful person. We've actually, we've gone through quite a few directors. Um, we would like to keep this one. Um, and this one is doing a phenomenal job as far as everything goes. And when we do ask for money, which seems we do a lot of, um, we do get a lot of, of that. We would just rather be able to set up an endowment fund of some sort. And hopefully in six years, we won't have to do a, a renewal of the village. We'll be able to have something, um, set so that it, it will proceed.
Who's your director?
Um, Nicole Church.
Okay.
He's great.
Commissioner Scott, do you have something?
Well, I don't, I'm a favor. Go ahead, go ahead. Well, I'm in favor of putting a smell like John, but, uh, point two, point two is a very small number, you know? And that's fine with me.
And we still do fundraising, we still do all of that. So, I mean, we, we will still have all of.
And we still got a contract with him.
Oh, yeah.
You can still be, and, and I don't understand this, you can still be a, a five oh one three C with a village?
Oh, yeah.
Okay, okay. I didn't know that. I was unaware of that.
Thank you.
Um, anything else or notice? Anything else under military class? Commissioner Simmons? Do you have anything else under services you wanted to add? I mean, we kinda had a general, um, conversation.
I would just, that, what I added on here, um, on the agenda is that I would hate to see, cut this, cut this, cut this, and then all of a sudden something happens where a bunny shows up, like a grant or whatever, you don't have to cut it, and the people are gonna say, well, you said.
I, I don't dis.
I didn't want that to happen. I think it could happen.
Uh, but, but I, I hear both sides of this, and I guess I don't know what the right answer is, but people are pretty black and white. I mean, they're gonna vote a certain way by what they specifically see. Not maybes, not what ifs, and I, I totally understand both, both of, of what you guys are saying. Put this, don't put this, because we don't necessarily know.
And that's what a Headley rollback is, puts questions in their mind, because they don't understand it.
Hundred percent.
They don't even understand how Headley is even there.
Poselay too, doesn't help either.
Poselay, yeah. And, and so, um, to roll all that back, it makes it even more misunderstanding. Uh, my, my thing, when I look at it, if this was to roll back, if it was to roll back was this, this will give us a good chance for a fun balance.
Yes.
Okay, I'm not looking at rolling this back and then, whoa, hey, let's spend every dollar that comes in. No, 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 we need to build a fun balance. And.
At least get out of the negative.
To get out of the negative, yeah, get out of the negative and, and build a fun balance. Uh, yeah, yeah, even if it's two percent, it's a start.
Yeah.
We're not even close. This is not, to me, this is not an infusion of money to increase spending.
No.
We still got other cuts to make, whether we talk Headley or not. That's all there is to it.
I, I guess by looking at this ballot villages, what, what's going on here from a state level, from a, any, this is just us locally?
This is just us locally.
What else are people going to say?
It's gotta be in November, it's probably gotta be a couple of proposals come up.
From, for the state?
Yeah, that's what I'm asking.
I don't know yet.
I would, I would.
So you don't know? Honestly, their deadline. Gosh, their deadline for the February one was just a couple of weeks ago. Like we had to wait in our ballots until their deadline. So they have, they have a much later deadline than we do. So I don't.
Know of any, go, okay.
I've not heard anything. Um, I've not seen anything.
I don't, that's just more exhaustion for voters and communities.
It is, and this is not all the townships.
Pardon me?
This is not all the townships that plan on.
But those are the only townships that were mentioned at the budget meeting.
That were, right, correct, correct.
I see you had a pretty good turnout, but it wasn't every, it wasn't every township.
Not every township, no.
But it was a great turnout.
Yeah, I, I seen who attended, I looked at that. Okay, so I, I, did you have anything else you wanted to add to that, I guess? What were you? I, I don't think we're, I think we just need to continue the conversation at this point in time. Right, right now, we're next Thursday. You need a vote on placing it on the village, correct? Or on the ballot?
Notice of intent.
But, um, our, our, uh, budget is online, right?
Yes.
So people can look at it, and they can see how much stuff costs and what's already been cut has been in the papers, what's already been cut. But we're short over a million dollars. So that means from the general fund, we're gonna have to cut over a million dollars. Some, some, uh, services will be reduced, and instead of waiting maybe two, three weeks for something, or two, three days for something, you may be waiting two, three months for something. You know, that's just the way it's gonna be, and they're gonna have to accept it. They may get angry because they have to wait so long, but we have no choice. So it's either reduce, reduce services and plus, uh, do away with some, uh, functions that the county does now. You know, it could be, it, it can be, what I'm saying, it can be a composite of both. But I don't want to say just this and this, and then, but we'd also probably have to reduce services on top of what we put on that list that, that's gonna be gone, if that's what you want to do.
Well, I thi- I think there needs to be more, more, uh, conversation at the, at the budget committee, um, and then bring it back to us.
No problem.
Okay.
We can do that, yeah.
Just one more quick thing to add to that. Um, so I think like Commissioner Scott said, it's so hard to really understand Headley and, and to wrap your head around it and to really get how it really, you know, could generate one point, you know, one million dollars plus the first year. So again, I think without Karen's help, and I know Randy, uh, Randy Booth's very intelligent with this, and Randy can explain things well. So another thing we're doing right now is we're strategizing, you know, how are we gonna market this to educate to these people so they can say, well, Headley, what is that? Well, they can go somewhere and they can learn, try to learn it like in a real simple format. Because you can have some people explain this to you, or you can read, and you have to read something twenty times to understand it. And you still don't totally understand it. So that's another thing we're working on too, and I think Randy would be great at this, and Randy's offered to do this. Or we might do like for our, we're gonna have an actual social media page where we could have Randy explaining it in the easiest way possible. Simple education. So there's a lot of things that we're gonna do to try to educate. We need to educate, and the message has to be very consistent across the board.
MSU had, uh, that, that informative sheet that MSU provided was, was pretty simplified. I, I felt.
Okay, so there'll be more to come on that. Item six, public.
I do have, um, for August, I'm looking for November right now. Uh, deadline to file for the August ballot is April thirtieth, and the state and federal, they have till June seventh. The deadline for local villages to be filed is April thirtieth for the August election.
Right, I've got that on top of the sheet.
The state has till June seventh to put.
Wow.
Yeah, so and it's, I didn't see it yet for November, but I'm assuming it's probably about the same timeline.
Probably is. Tell you the whole.
September sixth.
Yeah.
September sixth and then, so.
August, August thirteenth, I think, for November.
So.
Okay, so a month.
For next week and we're going to ha- have the, the animal tell their question up.
And how they put it up.
Roll back, but you know.
Correct.
Um, the library. We have to do that also. That's new.
Yes.
Branch Library is new. I thought they already had. They don't have a millage now? No?
No.
I think.
Oh, they.
Is there anybody? Talk about the library?
Yeah.
I think.
Yeah, they were there at our meeting.
There is a.
Not tonight, oh.
So do you need that on? Do you need that on for next Thursday, Tim? The language or the, just the intent for the?
They wanna be in May, we do.
Yeah, okay.
Yes, January thirtieth, end of this month.
It says new.
Because they are good at the current millage.
Yeah, it is a current millage.
If you're in that district, it is on your bill. We're in the district.
I can pay for it.
The bill, but.
Are they asking?
The wording and that's why it's gonna be considered new.
Oh.
Okay, it's the same millage, but now because it's gonna change.
Right, it'll be considered.
It'll be considered new.
It is an existing millage right now.
Yes, it, it's not, they're not gonna come out with two millages.
No.
Gonna have one millage.
Change, which, if you change the wording.
All right, that's what I, that's, that's.
Library, that's, um, what, what townships or what municipalities are with the library? The branch library.
West Branch District.
Yeah.
I know Edwards and.
Edwards, Horton. Edwards, Horton.
City.
The city. Um, Ogama, Foster. Any clacking?
You talking about who plays?
Or no, maybe not clacking. Clacking might be for Rose City.
What's that?
You talking about, is he talking about? The West Branch Library?
Yeah, yes, what townships?
West Branch Township does, I know I do.
Alright.
Yeah, it's, it's not.
Edwards, Ogama, Foster.
I don't know.
I believe Foster's in it.
Could be. I don't know if they're there, Rose City.
That's fine. It's just, it's not countywide, no.
No.
No, it's not, but the other ones, the other ones affect the other areas.
Right.
So in August, you got a library point four new. Is that the Rose City one? And then the next one is the.
That's Richland, that's Richland Township.
Library.
Okay, you got a library point four new and then you got Richland Township new.
No, they're, Richland Township Library is the same thing.
Yeah, is that combined with Rose City then?
No.
Rose City has a library too.
I understand, but Richland Township will be having a library millage.
They're putting it on because they, they use some of their monies from, uh, COVID to keep the library open over there in Prescotts until they had enough time to put it on for a, for the voters to choose. So no, that's.
Rose City's library is not asking for a village?
Ogama District Library.
Um, is it Ogama District?
They could be. Maybe they just weren't at that meeting. I cannot answer that.
It's good way legs financially hurting as well, if their libraries sold.
Well, there's a Richland. Richland together?
Oh, they have separate, separate libraries.
Separate libraries?
Yes.
We have four separate library districts?
But, yes, but yet they're all somewhat combined, but I think they're, they're talking about a separate village.
Skidway and the village are their own.
Correct.
And then you have Ogama District Library, which is a multiple municipal and West Branch District Library, which is multiple municipalities. The village zone.
There's three.
Skidway is their own. We have four libraries.
Four library districts.
Yeah.
Not districts.
Prescott.
We have two districts, then you have Skidway, which is their own library, and the village has their own library.
The village of Prescott.
Yes. And then the library over there is pretty active. It was pretty, pretty surprising this year. Got a lot going on over there.
Okay, that's, that's fine, I don't. They wanna, they wanna, they're asking me to put okay, military process. I don't, not having any problem with that.
And again, there may be more. This is just what they said was at the, uh, meeting, because they're not, we're nowhere near the deadlines for those.
I've had more file already for May.
Township.
Mm-hmm. Who's filed? Can you tell us that, please? Not off the top of my head. I can.
On your head.
From the bottom of my head, I can tell you that Ogama Township filed. Um, honestly, I can't remember. She's the, the last one that brought it to me. And Lynn brought me hers for Churchill.
So we invited key stakeholders that were looking for countywide villages to our budget meeting. And then we had a couple of townships that just heard about meeting and came.
Good, okay. Alright, guys, more to come on that. Item six, public comments. Um, you guys have a public comment? You wanna come on up?
Yeah, I guess.
You got, well, you got, you know how this works. Come on up. You got, you got three minutes.
I need to get her down here, I guess, what time it is.
Yeah.
Yeah, I've got a question about the zoning. I'm not, not understanding how we're regulating single businesses and not multiples that are doing the same thing. It's pretty clear that in here that any dirt that's moved in Ogama County, that is in a basement, crawl space or building is regulated, including, including all the, uh, subsoil. There's sixty-five open holes in ground where dirt's been moved in Ogama County, but only one is being enforced. And I'm not understanding, is there a subset that isn't in your books?
Only one is being, what did you say?
Enforced.
Okay.
Or under threat of enforcement. Okay, I've been doing now some third generation, my mom's side and third generation, my dad's side, and I've been doing it twenty-five years. I've never seen enforcement. The road commission has borrow pits that they go into people's property, take dirt, build roads. By your codes, that's enforceable. All has to be sloped in, has to have analysis before they can do it. And it makes it a commercial operation. Any topsoil screening, any dirt screening, anything. Movement of dirt, anything is regulated by your codes, but has never been enforced.
Yeah, I think I can.
Tim?
But we, we talked about this on a couple of times. And, uh, bottom line is, we need to get to Brian where those places are because he will enforce.
Did he Google them?
I, I don't know.
Drive is literally past. You, all you do is drive down thirty. You're looking at it. How, how do you miss when you get past the overpass? Your old man's pit's been there for ever.
Um, there's also, you know, certainly, I don't know how long it's been there. I don't know how long we've had the zoning ordinance, but there would be an issue there as far as what might get grandfathered. But bottom line is, if there are those operations going on, we need to get that information to Ryan so he gets out there and can determine where the.
So on his way to my place, he passes two of them within a half mile of my place. In the open.
Alright, I mean, I'll, I'll tell him that too. Now, the other one at the road commission, they probably are exempt from the county zoning ordinance.
Not exempt from borrowing dirt, because there's no exemption for farms either and farms are doing the same thing. There's thirty-five open farm pits.
I'm just saying municipa, they're considered a government, road commission is. So they're doing it.
But they're taking it off individuals' lands.
Well.
It's not their pit. They're going to homeowners that are nearby and taking dirt from their property and leaving open pits.
Okay.
And then revisiting them, which means that needs, that needs special use.
I don't disagree with you, but.
So every farm needs special use that are getting their sand.
The, the key is though, this to get Brian, I know it's, it's happening here, it's happening here, it's happening here.
So I have to tattle to save me.
You know what? If you were to call me, I will take that information over to Ryan and say, please look into these.
That's, that's neither my job, though.
I, I don't know where they are.
Yeah, but.
I'm just offering that.
But as a county, if you're gonna regulate it, it's your job to know where those are. You know where there's fifty of them. I know you do, Craig. I know you know where a bunch of them are.
Unfortunately, we're at our three minutes, so I.
I can't speak with any.
I appreciate that, but, um, like, like Ryan said, the only thing I'm gonna say, and unfortunately, this isn't, we have rules that we have to follow during this public comment, but Ryan sat here with, just recently and stated, just tonight and stated that he only looks primarily at complaints.
Right.
So unless something is brought to him, unfortunately, probably in writing, like he said, um, he, he doesn't go out looking for problems.
On the other end of that, he is never called to see how it's structured. The excavating company does not own the land he is trying to enforce. They're being paid to dig a pond.
So.
Separation through the DEQ, because it's a C corp. There are two separate structures. You wanna talk to Green Contracting? I gotta bring her up. I'd have to get Dick Matt Schelder. There'd be four of us, because that's our board.
How about the two of you two connect?
Let's keep talking.
Yeah.
You're so. Giving me new information here that's got the wheels turning.
There, there are two separate issues. I mean, it'll be a trailer park. Don't kid yourself. You're gonna hurt me. We're gonna argue with neighbors.
So do you have Tim's contact?
I didn't, I didn't save it. It would take.
Well, I, I, I don't, but I'll.
His office number?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Item seven, closed session for strategy session connected with the negotiations of a collective bargaining agreement. Someone wanna make the motion?
I'll make the motion. Are we going to close session? Was negotiation of collective bargaining agreement, MCL fifteen point two six eight, section, subsection C.
Someone like to support that?
I'll start it.
We have a motion with support and there will be no business after. Correct him? Just so everybody's aware, there'll be no business after. Uh, real club vote.
Brenda Simmons.
Yep.
Andrew Mayhew.
Yes.
Benny David.
Yes.
Yes.
Charles Wilson.
Yes.
So we'll be going into closed sessions. Thanks, guys. Have a good night.
You as well. Night, everybody.
Hi, Tom. We're off.
Hi, Dan.
See you guys later.
See ya.